Welcome to the Brookfield Selectmen's Meeting of Tuesday, April 30th, 2019. Would you like to raise and join me in saying, "Pledge allegiance to the flag"?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
We're going to get started. We have a hold hearing this evening. Okay, here, skip here. All right. The Brookfield Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on a petition of National Grid on Tuesday, April 30th, 2019, at 6:10 PM in the banquet hall located in the Town Hall, 6 Central Street, Brookfield. National Grid requests permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the public way. And so we have here this evening?
Florida. Napolitan.
Okay. And so now you're going to take over from this?
Sure.
Okay.
So what we need to do is install a new 35-plus-two pole to serve a new house that's being built at 155 Biscayne Road. It's, let's see, beginning at a point 1,800 feet north of the center line of the intersection of schoolhouse cross road and continuing approximately 100 feet in a westerly direction.
Okay. Let's begin with you.
Motion to approve.
No, I want to ask, do we have any butters here from out there or don't?
Yep.
Nobody here, so I'd like a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
And then, we need a motion to sign the petitions for the poles and wire locations.
Motion to sign.
Seconded.
I'm in favor.
Aye.
All right.
Great, thank you. You as well. I'm sorry.
This one?
Maybe you can put the clip on it.
I can do that.
These are the mic and what might support. We'll go back to the beginning now if that's all right. Okay, I would like a motion to approve an expense warrant for 4/30/19 for $455,942.97.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
I'm in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
And another motion to approve Selectmen's minutes of 4/16/19.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
I'm in favor.
Aye.
And then another announcement here is Senator Godey's aide will hold office hours at the Brookfield Town Hall from 2:00 PM to 3:00 PM Wednesday, May 1st. All are welcome. And then I have another announcement. The Board of Selectmen would like to congratulate Kermit Eaton for recently receiving the Lucy Stone Award from the Quaybog Historical Society. A longtime volunteer, Kermit has always taken an active role in supporting civic causes in Brookfield. His good work are much appreciated and we recommend him for his efforts on behalf of the town. The award is well deserved and congratulations again to Kermit.
Exactly, I second that.
All right, seconded. Okay. All right, we're going to, if it's all right, we can take out of, we'll take out of order, number three with Mr. Taft. It's the QQLA alum treatment discussion.
Do you need a motion for that?
Yeah, motion to do that.
To take it out of order.
Second.
I'm in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
And another motion to approve Selectmen's minutes of 4/16/19.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
I'm in favor.
Aye.
And then another announcement here is Senator Godey's aide will hold office hours at the Brookfield Town Hall from 2:00 PM to 3:00 PM Wednesday, May 1st. All are welcome. And then I have another announcement. The Board of Selectmen would like to congratulate Kermit Eaton for recently receiving the Lucy Stone Award from the Quaybog Historical Society. A longtime volunteer, Kermit has always taken an active role in supporting civic causes in Brookfield. His good work are much appreciated and we recommend him for his efforts on behalf of the town. The award is well deserved and congratulations again to Kermit.
Exactly, I second that.
All right, seconded. Okay. All right, we're going to, if it's all right, we can take out of, we'll take out of order, number three with Mr. Taft. It's the QQLA alum treatment discussion.
Do you need a motion for that?
Yeah, motion to do that.
To take it out of order.
Second.
I'm in favor.
Aye.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I'm here tonight representing QQLA. We have continuing to try to monitor and manage the quality of the water of South Pond. Reaching out to apply for a 319 grant, Mass DEP 319 grant. The goal here is to do an alum treatment. And an alum treatment is an application of aluminum sulfide that coagulates phosphorus. We recently had a very, we had taken two samples, three samples in South Pond of the, both the surface water and the, basically the sledge at the bottom of the pond. The bottom samples came back four times what we thought they were, which was determined by the TMTL study done by Mass DEP in 2006. So what we're doing, we're working with ESS, which is an environmental consultant, and they have suggested, proposed that we do this alum treatment. The alum treatment would be requested through a grant. We're reaching out, we have reached out to the town of Sturbridge to meet the host community. And we're reaching out to Sturbridge, East Brookfield, and Brookfield to write a letter supporting the request for the alum treatment. We have identified that there is definitely a problem and it confirms what was said back in 2006 on the TMTL study. So what we'd like to do is ask the town of Brookfield to write a letter in support of the alum treatment. And I have a couple of letters here, copies that I can give you. There's a copy from the town of Sturbridge and from, I think there's more copies here than you need, but I'll give you four. We've already had a meeting with the Conservation Commission in Sturbridge and they have endorsed the treatment.
Do you have one from East Brookfield, a letter, or just from Sturbridge?
I don't have one from East Brookfield yet. We went before the East Brookfield Board of Selectmen last night and they have endorsed it and they will write a letter. This one is from SLAC. SLAC is the Sturbridge Lake Association Committee. And both of those letters support the treatment itself. So the treatment will be done in South Pond. And the reason we're doing it in South Pond is because the alum, the alum treatment is only effective under certain conditions. And the conditions are that you have to have a certain depth of water and you have to have a certain depth, a certain density of phosphorus. And South Pond has both of those conditions. It is about 90 feet deep in the deepest spot and the alum treatment will be only applied in the depths that are more than 55 feet. So what it does is the alum acts as a coagulant or a flocculant and it will, it will take the phosphorus that's in the water column and it will clump it together, it will fall to the bottom, it will create a mat, and that will seal the phosphorus that's in the muck. And so what happens twice a year, spring and fall, is you end up with a thermocline where the water temperature takes and turns the lake over. It does it in the spring, does it in the fall. And when it does that, all of that phosphorus gets re-energized into, reintroduced into the water column. The phosphorus is very, supports weed growth. And over the last few years, we have noticed significant discoloration in the water. The clarity is down. We have a lot of filamentaceous algae which is growing throughout the lake. And we also experienced two algae, blue-green algae blooms last year. This alum treatment would certainly help that. The expectation is that with this treatment, it would benefit the lake for up to 25 years. So we would see an improvement in the clarity and sealing off the phosphorus.
Do we know what the phosphorus sources are currently?
I'm sorry?
Do we know what the phosphorus sources are currently? So besides this treatment, what options do we have to like?
So back, when, when Mass DEP did the TMTL study back in 2006, they would support the phosphorus, the alum treatment to create, to handle the phosphorus if we got the additional 18 inches onto the flow barrier, which is not going to happen. East Brookfield is not willing to go that route. But with, so the sources of the phosphorus is years and years of elevated amounts of phosphorus, a lot of it coming from the Spencer Waste Water Treatment Plant, but also runoff when you get a lot of heavy rain. And you see what we're getting. We just did this municipal vulnerability program dealing with, you know, climate change and that's, this is one of the conditions. We're getting a lot of runoff. So that, that introduces a lot of phosphorus into the lake from that as well. So this, this is an occurrence that has been going on for, you know, 100 years. We should see a pretty significant reduction with the benefits that we've made in dealing with Spencer Waste Water Treatment Plant. The phosphorus coming from the plant should be significantly reduced. So that's, that's a very positive. But it's, it's the buildup of the phosphorus in the lake over the, you know, 100 years that's.
Now, will the lake be closed at all while you're doing this?
Nope, nope. There is no reason to close the lake and it will be done in the, probably in the fall. And so what we're doing is like, say, we're reaching out to the three towns along with QQLA to fund this. So what we are doing here tonight is asking for a support letter or recognition that there is a problem in the lake and to go forward, to support, that the town would support the, the program. Now, let me just talk a little bit about the cost. This is a very expensive program. So the, the treatment is, looks like it will be in the area of about $342,000. With that, we, the Mass DEP grant, the 319 grant, is a 60/40 split. So 60% of the funding is covered by the state and the 319 grant. I have a, this is a breakdown of what we are requesting from each town. So as you can see from Brookfield, we would be looking for $25,000. From East Brookfield, we'd be looking for $15,000. From Sturbridge, we're looking for $55,000. And QQLA will pony up $20,000. And that leaves us about $20,000 short, which we think that we can, we can provide in in-kind services. So that would bring us to the total of $136,800, which is 40% of the $342,000 estimate. So, and you might ask, why is the breakdown that way? It's based on any number of things. Total population, and you can see what the total population is in each community at the very top of the page. So Brookfield's about 22% of the total of the population of the three towns. East Brookfield's about 13% and Sturbridge is about 64%. So using that along with the breakdown of population on the lake and tax revenues as best we can gather from Sturbridge, that's how we came up with those, the estimate breakdown for each town and for QQLA. I do have some information here on the, the treatment itself. And I only have, this is a PowerPoint presentation that was done by ESS and I only have a couple of copies that I can give you one.
What's the timeline?
So the timeline is, is that the request for proposals for the 319 grant have to be in by June 4th. And we are working to get that request for proposal into Mass DEP for, for that date. The anticipation is that the award would be made by them or the announcement would be made by them as to who might get the grant would be in September of this year. So in all likelihood, we would not be ready to do this treatment until the fall of next year, 2020. And so we, we would anticipate that we would come to the town with a, with a article, funding article for the $25,000 from Brookfield.
And that will be in the fall?
So that, part of my question is, what is, what is this plan on money articles for the annual town meeting?
We'll probably do them in the fall.
Okay. So that, that would probably be the request. And if we were, if we asked for the money, it would be contingent upon being awarded the 319 grant. I mean, obviously, we wouldn't need it if we don't qualify for the grant. And we would certainly, we should know by September of 2019. So that's, that's kind of a quick summary of what we're looking for. I would, when we went to Sturbridge, we had Carl Nielsen, who was from, from ESS down in Providence, and he came before the conservation and presented the, the information that you see in the PowerPoint. The PowerPoint breakdown that I handed out is a two-case.
Study.
Study. They are in the process of being, preparing to do a alum treatment in a reservoir, a drinking water reservoir in Rhode Island. And so that's one of the studies. And then the other part of the study is how it compares to South Pond. So like I mentioned, we would be doing about 25% of the, the lake treatment, which will benefit the whole lake, and only in the areas that are about 55 feet deep or deeper. And Carl would be more than glad to come up and explain the whole process if you, if you so desired. So that's, that's what I'm here for and that's what I would.
Thank you for the presentation.
Like to see if we can get a letter, if we can get a letter of support. And the reason for the letter of support is Mass DEP doesn't basically, it's beneficial for us to show that we get support from, from the communities to contribute to the, to the process.
Okay, I want to make a motion that we support the alum treatment on South Pond in that we send a letter of support in the town of Brookfield. I'd like a motion.
You have that motion?
Second.
Any discussion on that?
Well, only that we're going to have several conversations between now and July with Fisheries and Wildlife.
Yes.
And Boat Access as a second, meeting Boat Access on the second. So have you touched base with them yet?
We have not.
So in my conversations with them, I will.
Okay. And I'd be glad to provide, you know, similar information to them or attend the meeting so that, you know, if they have any questions, we'll certainly be able to answer them.
So I'm in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Okay.
Yes, thanks for the work you're doing with this.
I'm not awake. I'm only.
Or do we want to move on to?
I'm thinking we'll just go through those.
Oh yeah, why don't we go through them and then we can, oh, no, no, no.
Right, but we have to come back, we have to come back to open it.
Anyway.
Yeah, okay, all right. I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session under number two. And that is for, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Lincoln, aye?
Snyder, aye.
Coughlin, aye.
I'm in favor.
Aye.
And then we will come back and we will reopen the regular meeting because we have more things on our agenda this evening.
Good.
Okay, we'd like to reopen the meeting at 7:00 PM. Okay, we'll move on. We did that. Okay, now we're going to do the, the beach, the beach committee discussion and I'll turn that over to Mr. Snyder.
Well, there is no beach committee, so just so we're all clear. What we are doing is tomorrow night, we're going to have a preliminary discussion with three individuals who have expressed interest in helping with the beach and managing the beach. And I want to be very clear with them that what we're doing is we're talking with Fisheries and Wildlife as far as the management and how to go forward with the, the beach area. And then I will meet on May 2nd with the Boat Access representative because they have also expressed an interest for improved management of that area. Both entities, in fact, are talking about the ability for the town to solicit fees for use. And again, just so everybody's clear, what that, that means is probably in order of $25 for a yearly access, $2 per, a visit per family, per unit, whatever, for use of the boat ramp and the beach. So we need to verify and confirm that. We need to verify and understand what the agreements are that they're proposing to make sure that it's something we can live with. So with discussions over the next week or two, we'll better understand what it's, what it's all about. I'm very concerned as we move into the timing of the year that we'll have any agreements in place just because of the timing. So again, we'll work as quickly as we can to understand who from the town might volunteer to support a committee and then from, and go from there. I have been very clear to the individuals that I've talked to that it is not my plan to chair that committee or committees.
Oh, I know. You've got enough on your plate.
So, anyway.
We all have.
So that's where we are.
Okay. Any questions from anybody on it? Okay, we'll proceed.
The committee will have to make a decision as that happens. That's why they need to understand the dynamics right up front as far as who's responsible and the procedures that would have to be put in place for the money so that it's understood.
Now, is this?
So in the case of the yearly fee, I would look to the town clerk to issue those permits.
Now, where is that?
But that's not agreed to either.
Oh, yeah. But where?
So that's where we are.
Where is this fit though tonight? Oh, it is, okay. All right, I guess we each have a packet here. Carrie made us all a packet because we're going to move on to review the articles. Now, with these, all of them, even with the money too?
I have, the first one's a petition, the second one is the, I think, the non-money articles.
The non-money.
Non-funding. And the third one is the funding.
And then we've decided what we're going to do, we're going to do the regular budget plus we will do all the non-money articles and then we'll pick up again in the fall. Okay. Would we want to put this one on right? We want to number them?
I didn't number them. I was going to let you guys number them because I wasn't sure how you wanted to do it.
Okay.
You re-number them anyway all the time, so.
Well, one is normally, isn't that the opening and then two is when we start the budget? Isn't that how we normally do it?
Yeah, well, even if you number them this way, that's fine, whatever. We're going to do the, the ones that are always in the box anyway, which I think is like 1 through 10 or whatever.
Okay.
Just number them from one, just for the sake of numbering them and then.
Oh, okay.
We'll merge it into the, into the boilerplate warrant, okay?
All right. The first one we have, we'll start it off as Article One, is the citizen's petition. And it says, "We, the undersigned, hereby propose that a warrant article be added to the 2019 Brookfield Annual Town Meeting to change the Town of Brookfield bylaws to include a full-time position of town administrator. The town administrator would work directly under the administrative and policy direction of the Board of Selectmen and will oversee the daily operations of the town government." So we'll vote to put, we don't really don't vote to put this on because it goes on automatically.
It goes on automatically.
Okay. All righty. Now, we have another one, another petition. "We, the undersigned, request," and this will be number two. "We, the undersigned, request that the following article be placed on the annual town meeting warrant to see whether the Town of Brookfield shall raise or appropriate a sum of $2,000 to place additional streetlights throughout the town with the location and type of those lights to determine, be determined by the Selectmen." That's another one. That's number two. And then we have another citizen's petition, which we'll call number three, "To see if the town will vote to add a new bylaw, which if adopted will become Chapter Two, Section 22 of the town bylaw and read as follows. Prior to setting the tax rate each year, the Town of Brookfield must hold a town meeting for the citizens to consider an article on the amount of free cash to be used to reduce the tax rate." That's another one. All right. So that was three. Next one, we'll do it up as four. And this one is, "To see if the town will vote to transfer some of money from the ambulance revenue account to purchase a new ambulance or take any action relative thereto." And this is sponsored by Donna LaFleur, who is the emergency, she's the chief of the emergency squad. And she requests, she thinks it's going to cost about $270,000.
Motion to aye.
And then, yeah.
I'll second that.
I'll second that.
And they're, they're self, pretty much self-disdaining, so that would be no money. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, number five. "To see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of money from the ambulance revenue account to fund the fiscal year 2020 wage account." And that's also by Donna LaFleur.
Motion to post.
Motion to post, and, and the amount on that would be $189,000. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next would be six. And this is to see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of money from the ambulance revenue account for the fiscal 2020 expense. And that's from Donna, again. Motion?
Motion to post.
Second.
And that is $40,000.
Please keep in mind, these are all drafts and some of them are just placeholders, so the wording is not gonna probably stay the same and it'll be freshened up.
Okay, this, the next one is number seven, and this comes from our assessor, Al Jones. And this is to see if the town will vote pursuant to the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 38H, or any other enabling authority to authorize the Board of Selectmen on behalf of the Town of Brookfield to enter into agreement for payment in lieu of taxes for the pilot agreement for a term of 20 years from commercial operation with the owner, less see, and operator of the meetinged ground-mounted solar prolific energy generating facility located at Eight Mitchell Hill Road. And it's on the property, on the assessor's map, as map 4B, lot nine, parcel number 45 slash 4B 000009. Upon such terms as the selectmen shall deem to be in the best interest of the town and to further the authorization that the Board of Selectmen to take such actions as may be necessary to implement such agreements or take other, any other actions.
Motion to post.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the next one from Plankwood, there's no draft articles yet because I know they're gonna meet tomorrow, but basically it's two placeholders for that.
Okay, alright, so that, so that's, is this the email right here?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll call, the two of those, we'll call those eight?
And nine.
And nine, and when they come in, we'll reopen up the warrant to put them on. Oh, and this goes with it? Yeah, that's from Sharon, that goes with it, okay. Okay. And now, this is from the school, I don't know if you've had anything about, this is from Tantascwa. Alright, I talked, Deb Boyd had called me on this, to put this on. They're trying to put on some, I guess, new doors and windows at the junior high school over there. And a lot of it is going to be, they're trying to get a grant and some reimbursements to do this. And she wants to apply Tantascwa surplus reimbursements from the state to pay down the, oh, that, no, that's different, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I went on to that one, okay. But on to this one.
They want to borrow the money.
And then we would just have to pay our percentage of it, or, she said they were hoping to get a grant for this. So, I'm sure, you know, we can get some more information on this.
We should post it to have.
Yeah, and we will post it.
And I did send the email.
You did so, the email.
Two articles or one?
That's one, one is a motion.
It's one, the one, one is the motion, so this would be number 10. And I'll have Karen or myself, I'll call Deb and ask her if she can get us out some more information on that.
The Chief of Planting hasn't really had any information about this.
Well, I just heard about this, she, she. Okay, well, it wasn't, so I will get in touch with Deb Boyd, I'll give her a call and I'll ask her to get some information, more information about it and then I'll send it off to you.
Does it have to be, or could it be in the fall?
No, I don't know, I think, I think she wanted it on the, on the, this portion of it now. I'm gonna have to talk to her.
Yeah, but she's ready, ready a grant, she doesn't know what you need, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Could figure out what you need first.
Okay, I'll call her on that. Okay. And now, okay. That was 10, okay. This will be number 11, the next one. This is, I think we did this last year also. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer or borrow a sum of money as a debt service for the police station." And this comes from our share of a refund from Tantascwa that will help the debt get paid down quicker and the tax rate be stabilized on it. And we did the same thing then.
So, motion to post 11.
Beth, do you have a question on it? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the next one, we penciled and sponsored CIPC because that's what Chief Blanchard wanted, but we have Peter here, so we can ask him if they wanna sponsor it.
It's in the minutes from their meeting.
Oh, this was on the one to establish a police cruiser replacement account. Can we have you to sponsor it?
We, we would be happy to sponsor it.
Okay, alright, "To see if the town will vote to establish a police cruiser replacement account for the purpose of allocating funds each year toward the replacement of the police vehicles to expend such funds on the recommendation of the police chief and with the approval of the Board of Selectmen." So, I'd like a motion to put.
Motion to post 12.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, this one is 13.
This is for the, to replace the South Pond Bridge, it's the East Brookfield article.
Yeah, the East Brookfield, yeah, yeah.
Any explanations underneath?
Okay, it says here, "For replacement of South Pond Bridge, target federal system."
She said targeted federal off-season bridge money will fund the bridge.
Okay.
So, it's not gonna cost the town any money, there's no dollars.
So, they just need a two-thirds vote to, for us to approve this? Hmm?
Didn't, we already voted?
Five, they may have voted it like five years ago when the work was done.
No, this is, this is a new one.
Yeah, this is a new one. Dawn?
Not this one.
This article may be, is, is this one for a temporary easement for the purpose of construction?
Yeah, let's, yeah, this is.
Okay, so that is a new one.
Okay.
That was never voted on before, we were waiting for the terminology.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, they never got it.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is the, yeah.
No, we never had it.
No, this is the easement.
We talked about it before in the meeting.
We talked about it, we never got, never, it was actually an article.
Okay.
So, post 13 for bridge project.
Yeah, post that.
Now, I know, it says no money articles, but it's a dollar, so.
A dollar, why not, 14? Yeah, this is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer or borrow the sum of a dollar to plow private roads. Motion to put it on?
Motion post 14, private roads.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, that was number 14, yeah.
That was 14.
And now, this is number 15. This was put on by the Personnel Bylaw Committee. And to see if the town will vote to amend the town's personnel bylaw by adding the following, Section 29 longevity stipend. And this is to encourage employees retention, a longevity stipend will be paid annually to all full-time and part-time and benefit employ, employees except elected officials which qualify for years of service. Stipend will be paid at the end of the town's fiscal year. And they have as follows, if you've been here five to seven years, it would be $600. Eight to 11 years would be $750. 12 to 14 years would be $1,000. 15 to 19 would be $1,250. And 20 years and above would be $1,500. And we have, we had done some research and a lot of communities do have this, have this on, this longevity stipend. And they said how, I wasn't at the meeting when they did this, but I know in other communities, I'm gonna ta, talk to them, I don't know if we can reopen it, but they, some communities do have one for elected officials, they have a longevity for the elected officials too. So, I'd like a motion to put this on.
You have a motion to put, put it on, I just.
Do you have?
Motion, yeah, motion to put 15 on for longevity.
I'll second it.
Do you have some questions with it?
No, just timing, that's all.
Okay. Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, now, this one is from Mr. Snyder.
The fourth paragraph has the answer.
The fourth, okay.
Yeah, to see if the town, okay, to see if the town, oh, and this will be, what was that one?
15, this will be 16. Okay. "To see if the town will establish a revolving fund to be funded by monies resulting from funds derived from allowing APR to, to be returned to us. Funds resulting from these payments are to be directed as preserving open and space improvements in the town's recreation asset. This will enable the transfer of these monies by town meeting vote." And we, would you like to explain?
Yes.
Okay.
So, this would be 16.
Yeah, 16.
So, my motion is to add 16. So, we've had a number of farms that have put solar, solar arrays on their properties. With that, they have, have to return monies to the town, basically paying back the tax benefit that they've received through the APR, APR program. So, what the town does not have is it does not have any funds other than the general budget to fund, I would say, examples like the campground work and what we might be, be doing at the campground, what we might be doing to acquire land if land were to become available. So, by putting this in an account to maintain open sp, it's really to maintain open space. If it's, if it's taken out of APR, then to replace it with something that's related to open space. So, anyway, so that's, that's the.
Now, do some of them have, don't they have to have a money limit on them that you can only keep so much money in the revolving fund? Peter, do you know?
No.
We haven't reviewed this one, so we've just.
No, but I, I know with some of them over the years when we've talked about revolving funds that you can just keep so much money in them, you can't exceed a certain amount.
I think it depends on which mass general law it's formed under.
Is that what it is?
Yeah, so, so there'd be a couple of different ways to do it. Worst-case scenario, you can do it as a, if you can't do it as a revolving fund, you could at least do it as a segregated stabilization fund. And that, there's no limit on the amount of funds, but it would require a two-thirds vote to get the money out.
Yeah.
So, there's a couple of different types and we could probably check with KP about what's the.
Yeah, we'll check with KP on it.
What's this type?
Because we, we have knowledge that we're gonna get roughly $45,000 from this earlier article that we talked about. And so, we're looking at things like a playground set for Lewis Field, it's, the estimate was $80,000. This would be able to fund the playground.
Yes.
So, anyway.
Motion to put this on?
Yeah, you have that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Again, this is a capital planning article. I guess my question is, if you plan to defer these kinds of articles because funding is required for this to the fall, are you still gonna put on articles for the annual town meeting and then just pass them over? Or not put them on at all? This would be an example of one that I think should go on in the fall.
Well, this isn't, this is, this isn't a funding article.
It's not a funding.
We have knowledge that the town's about to receive $45,000 the next time.
Are you transferring money from one?
No.
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 Creating an account to receive the money once, once it's determined and could be voted at a following town meeting.
Yeah, this is just to open up so that we have this revolving account.
What happens if the, if you don't do this? It goes into the general fund, is it not?
We're, we're about to receive $45,000, it's gonna go into the general fund. I'm saying that's a mistake. And so, what my suggestion is, if we had a fund to put the money in and we had agreement to put the money in a fund, then in the future, if another $45,000 were to appear from another solar field, then that would be where that money would come from.
I, I can't speak for the capital planning committee, but I think this is a capital article. And it ought to be reviewed by the.
Oh, yeah, no problem with.
Oh, yeah, we'll, we'll turn over all the ones that.
This was, this was, Al made the recommendation because he had knowledge of what was going on, so I, I submitted a thing. For proposal.
I just think it is a money article. But, I mean, in a way, people are voting the money to this as opposed to some other capital needs. And, and the question is whether.
Yeah, okay.
People have the choice to do that in isolation of all of the other capital requests. Or, you know, this one is being given priority over fire engine, library, all of the other capital requests.
Well, what we will probably do, if we do put, like, put these on, we will just mark the ones passed over until a fall town meeting, we'll, we'll just do all in on money.
Well, let's also take a look at it from, from this perspective. I'm not certain that in this fiscal year, we could actually execute it at this town meeting for monies that we've received prior to the town meeting.
That we can't do anything going past.
But we can't. So, and that was my understanding of this, is that this was intended more as a structural option, not necessarily as a, as a given. So, let's first of all, get some additional clarity around that before we place it as to.
Oh, okay.
What this really means. Because it, it sounds like we, we don't necessarily know what, what chapter, section that we're calling and which type of revolving fund it would be.
So, we'll check with KP.
Why don't we start with that? Why don't we leave it off for now? We can revisit it because we're probably gonna have to reopen the warrant anyway for the ones that we don't currently have adequate structure for. And then, that'll give some time, once we've gotten the additional detail and structure to get it to the capital, capital improvement planning committee to, to work through it alongside of, of the, the other proposals that are on, on plan.
Mike, did you have?
Well, my question was, I just wanna make sure I understand that this $45,000 is just a one-time meeting, it's being, this pilot, it's gonna come one time for one project, it's not gonna come on the annual basis?
You don't know when it's gonna come next. What you, what you know is that there was a property that was under APR that to put it back into commercial operation, it's gonna be $45,000 owed to the town. The way that this is going to work because of where we are, because we don't have this, this revolving account that's dedicated by the, by the citizens, that they would agree that they'd wanna take monies returned from APR. What, what it would do is that we would, in this particular case, the monies that are gonna come from that project are gonna go into the general fund. What I'm suggesting is the next time it comes around, if it comes around the next time, that we in fact designate those funds that were preserving open space to continue to preserve open space. So, I don't have any problem with any review of this, it's just a suggestion on how to approach maintaining open space within the town.
Just as supportive information, speaking with Plankwood Chair, there is one other solar array that just got their permit. It's, it stretches over three towns, water, West Brookfield, and Brookfield, but the bulk of the arrays in Brookfield. And that is in Chapter 61, so there would be another.
Oh, yeah, that's another one.
In the future.
Which may fall under this depending on the structure of the revolving fund, so I just wanna make a word of that.
Good.
So, just to clarify, it's a one-time payment, it's not something you see on the annual basis?
Yeah, no, no, it's a one-time thing because see, they have to, what they do is they pay back all the taxes for the years that that property has been in like 61A or something, one of them 60.
I think Chairman that it should go into the Lewis Field Playground Equipment.
Oh, that was, no, no, that was just some suggestions that he had.
I'll reread the question, the, the statement. "This would offer matching funds for grants like improvements to Lewis Field, the beach, or the campground."
It was just different suggestions what we could use the money for, that's what it was.
I mean, that's just true, but I mean, we get the whole slew of things we could use it for, like you said, I mean, who will determine that meeting when you take this vote? How would we determine whether $45,000 is gonna go?
It would be determined probably by, by town meeting.
It would be deter, what, what I'm suggesting is that the town meeting vote upfront, that if you're gonna take land out of APR, which typically is farmland, forestry, whatever, you're taking it out of that. What I'm suggesting is that those monies go into a fund so that when the town has the opportunity to continue to maintain a level of open space, that there'd be monies available to do open space project-related activities, possibly buy additional lands, whatever. Again, there's no solu, no conclusion because there's no money in the pocket. But if there were money in the pocket and you had a project at Lewis Field that would need it to be funded, that would be a way to get some matching monies or something.
Well, it doesn't go into the general fund.
It does not, and again, Peter's, Peter's.
So, I just go with the capital for the committee, but then what?
True.
But if we come out and find by town meeting.
Just recommendations, I just stopped that.
To pay or something. In other words.
Oh, this is just a recommendation.
Yeah, it's just like, it's just like the water, it's just like the water. It, in essence, would be similar in structure, the most likely structure it would take is the same way what we got with the water now.
And if you hear me lobbying, what I'm suggesting is if we have 52% of our town in open space today, then number out a remaining 52%. Or something like that.
Okay.
Linda, sorry.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
So, we'll vote to, oh, we're gonna have.
We're gonna hold.
We're gonna hold on that. Okay, so we'll move on, the next one will be number 16. Okay.
Well, there's no more really, you just have the funding articles.
Oh, these are the fun.
You wanna go through any of the talks about, because there's some issues.
Yeah, there's some, we'll go through the funding articles. Okay.
I know you're gonna recommend they all go in the fall, right?
Yeah, these will all go on in the fall. Yeah, well, these will all go on in the fall, uh, this is to see if the-
If, if I may, the, the water department didn't put in a placeholder for transferring any funds, we don't have a meeting until next Wednesday.
Okay.
Can I put a placeholder in?
Sure.
And it would just be a transfer of-
Make it number sixteen.
Yeah, we'll make that number sixteen.
Okay, and I'll give that information next week.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll re- yeah, cause we'll, I'm sure there's gonna be more articles that come along that will reopen up the ballot, I mean, will reopen the warrant. Okay. Oh, I think for number sixteen, so.
Okay.
From the war.
Just using that.
Okay, I'll just put sixteen, that would be for the water. Okay. Make a motion that we put a placeholder on-
Yes, for sixteen.
For the water department?
Sixteen, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, the next one here is from the library. This, and we, this is so, do we wanna number the, no, we'll wait, we won't number these, we're just gonna review them. Let me put all of these together. Now, we'll move on and we'll review the money articles. Okay, this is, um, the one, this is from the library and, and the library trustees, this is to see if the town will vote to authorize the board of selectmen to acquire by gift purchase or otherwise certain realty property and the improvements thereon known as eighteen Harmon Street, described in a deed recorded with the Worcester Registry of Deeds, book, uh, one, seven, one, four, three, page one, three, four, upon such terms and conditions as the board of selectmen or the library board of trustees shall determine to be appropriate and to further raise an appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow the sum of two-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand and to fur- and to authorize the board of selectmen or the library trustees to execute any and all documents to carry out the intent of this article or take any relative action. Now, if I remember, wasn't there something here in the deed that said that this had to be done by July with, when their lease?
It would, if, if we were going to do it this year, I do think it would actually have to be done for the close of the fiscal year, so it may be that we need to, to send a correspondence to the, um, library trustees that we really are, are not gonna be able to pursue-
Yeah.
-this type of article for the, for the annual town meeting. We're not in a position to do it.
Yeah.
I think, I think we can continue with the, um-
The leasing?
And then, I think the question then becomes that the, the lease should just be incorporated into the operating budget, so that we give the town the time to, to do what we need to do.
Yeah, you taking it? Okay, but I did, I thought there was something in, in here.
No, it just, it, it says an option, yeah.
It's all on the first page?
Yeah.
Look at the bottom.
The bottom, okay, during this term of lease, the tenant shall pay during the term, the extension term, a monthly rent of, uh, fifteen hundred per month, uh, payable in advance on the first day of the month, or, in the case of the initial term, would be sixty-five, six thousand, sixteen thousand five hundred paid in lump sum prior to the commencement date, and, and if the case of extension term, the sum of, of sixteen thousand five hundred be paid prior to the commencement date of the extended term, shall rent be appropriated for partial month of occupancy during the term herein provided. If rent is not paid with the fifteenth of the month, tenant shall pay interest on any unpaid sum. So then, like you said, we'll just have to put this in the budget.
Yeah, I think, I think what we, I think that would be, that would probably be the best option, but we need to talk to the library trustees regarding this.
Yeah, so, we'll have to talk to them on this.
Do you want me to reach out to them about what some of the options might be with regards to that?
Yeah, yeah, you can.
I'll take that as an action.
Okay, thank you, yeah, that would be good.
Brenda's aware if you're going, right?
Yeah.
All right. Okay, just let me know, okay?
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, we need, we need to take a look at the options because-
Okay.
We're not gonna be in a position to go out for any type of financing.
To do that, no, right, okay. All right, uh, this is, uh, one that is put on by the highway, it's normally about the same amount every year. It's to, uh, raise and appropriate the sum of thirty-five thousand to fund the road reconstruction and reconstruction accounts. So we'll put that on.
Well, I think, I mean, that's another-
No, no, I didn't mean this, uh, we'll put this on for the fall.
For the fall.
Yeah, Mike?
Well, I, I just wondered how, how you, I think you've all agreed this evening that none of the money articles are gonna be-
No.
Submitted for the annual town meeting, so does it make sense to just make the motion to defer all those to the town meeting and go over each individual one of them, for the sake of time?
Peter?
Capital planning committee recommended all non-urgent, um, money articles be deferred. I think last year, we funded the highway, um, uh, construction and reconstruction account because it is urgent, the season for doing the work.
Right now, we don't know if we could do it or not.
But, and we funded it out of stabilization, so, uh, with the expectation that stabilization would be reimbursed at the fall, so, uh, I would just-
Yeah, that makes sense.
Say, you might want to not do a blanket motion and instead look at them individually and decide whether they're urgent or not, um, or, you know, in terms, especially in terms of the highway.
But why don't, why don't we actually vote to place that on there just as a sum of money, and then depending on if there is something critical that needs to be addressed or what we get for balances in that account, if we have a balance, that, that would give me a decision.
So we wanna put this, um, so we wanna put this on then?
I think we, I think we can, and we can just-
Pass it over?
Pass it over, maybe.
If we have to.
If we have to.
Is that kind of a, what's your view?
Yeah, but-
Is that what your view, I mean?
It's an article every year that they do.
Number seventeen then, right?
This would be seventeen then.
All right, seventeen.
So do we wanna go through all of them, just so that we have an, we'll have an idea? Yeah.
I don't think we can necessarily read them all in detail.
No, okay, all right, I will, I'll just go through them quick, okay.
So I'll make a motion to place that as eighteen.
Okay, all in favor?
Second, aye.
Aye.
All right, and this one is, um, is seventy-five hundred, uh, for the centerline painting of town roads, we normally-
That can wait, cause usually they'll do it till spring, actually, so we're about to spend the money we voted last year.
Okay, all right, and then the next one is, um, eight thousand for the state mandated emergency action plan for Saw Mill Pond Dam.
And we have to do that, that's dated.
That's gonna be done.
Okay, so I make a motion to place that as eighteen.
Oh, you wanna put this on?
Yes, we, it's mandated. Not a choice, that's eighteen.
Eighteen.
Motion to place eighteen, Saw Mill Pond.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Okay, all right, and this is another, this is from, um, the fire department, this is, uh, they have a request for three-hundred-and-thirty thousand to replace the used nineteen-eighty-seven open cab pumper.
Hold.
Need to hold that one.
Yeah, that's another hold, all right. And this is another one, also from the fire, I think we can hold this till the fall, too. This is, um, twenty-two thousand to purchase protective clothing and air bottles.
Let's place this one with the generic verbiage, and then if there's like a couple that absolutely have to get done, let's get them to get an inventory and see if there's anything that absolutely needs to get replaced.
Fire department's still in the running for this to be funded, uh, by FEMA, by, by FEMA grant, so we, we don't know the result yet.
We gotta place it.
So we'll place it, we'll place it, okay, motion.
Send the truck or is that the clothing?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
But I don't think we wanna put the truck on now, until, no, no, we're not putting the truck on.
These are still in the running for FEMA funding, so we, we don't-
So we-
What are you doing?
I, I'd still place the, the clothing one though, because they might have a-
They're talking about putting-
Total amount that we need to spend.
Um, the twenty-two thousand on.
Air bottles.
You wanna place that one?
Place nineteen.
That's not-
This will be noted, yeah.
Yeah, I, I would place that one, and, and it's, that's why the dollars is not in the verbiage on that one, cause we might only need to do like two thousand if there's something he needs before the, the fire comes back.
All right, a motion to put this on?
Yes, you have that motion, nineteen, place-
To place on, okay.
Fire department.
Any more discussion on that?
Protective.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
The county can get-
Okay, and this is one, um, now who's, who did, oh, this is from the, the chief, chief of police, this can go on till next time, it's six thousand for a new commercial-grade copy of printer and fax machine.
And hold that one for the fall, I'll make a motion and pass it, hold that one.
Yeah, hold that till the fall, all in favor?
Aye.
Hey, this is another one, um, this is from Chief Blanchard also, this is to borrow the sum of ninety-four thousand, six-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars and ninety cents for two Chevy Tahoe, Tahoe Cruises, or eighty-seven thousand, two-hundred-and-nineteen dollars for two Ford Explorer Cruises, and, uh, this, this definitely has to be held over, too, till the fall. Has he discussed this with you, Peter?
Yes, uh, the figure he gave us was substantially lower.
There's sixty, he just brought those in today, they're on, so, those are the figures he has.
Okay.
Yeah, it's substantially lower, cause I remember the, the two was supposed to be closer to seventy.
So these are the ones we're gonna hold?
Yeah.
I think the one he gave us was the, the-
Were there some for a special or what?
No.
Were there any specials?
Could any of those go on a special?
I don't know.
What's that?
I asked her if there was any for, any for the special town meeting, come in, cause that was the deadline for the-
Well, no, cause most of the special usually comes from the accounting office, so, we need, we need, we need, we need to do with snow and ice, um, deficit for the special.
Yeah, so we'll have to get those on.
Yeah, that, that one's a given, um, and you-
Anything else should be, wait, see what Marilyn says, okay?
Yeah, so, so the rest of that would come as far as, as, as once we get through some of the account.
Yeah, we'll have to reopen, okay. All righty. Now, we have a municipal-
Peter, Peter, nature.
I, it's a question about some things that were presented in the capital planning committee, but which are not coming as articles, and I just wanted to check. So, um, we don't, I, I don't, no article on Peters, and, and the-
No.
Uh, replacement of the email system?
No.
No, we were gonna put that in the line item.
No, no, that's gonna be in the fall, well-
Oh, that'll be in the fall.
Yeah, it'll be in the fall.
Yeah, we're gonna hold that over until the fall.
And the, as far as the email goes, I mean, it's, it's acceptable now until the fall, I had, me and Cindy are the ones that had the most problem with our email, and I asked her if she could hang on to the fall, she said yes, and I agreed to do the same thing, only because I basically don't know if there's any money available, so.
Yeah.
But again, I would, it sounds to me, uh, basically, uh, the discussion we heard was that that was pretty urgent, and was interfering with the running of the communication system, and if it needed to be funded out of stabilization, I think our committee would be in favor of it, uh, simply because-
Well, we spoke to, um, Larry, who's, who does in Forest, and Larry thought that we could hold off until the fall, also.
Well, and also, we, we, what we really need to do is, is get some additional information and proposals, because-
I presented Max to, to the, to the-
Well, well, and that was only a working draft, okay? Um, and, and we, we need to get some, some clarity, um, he, he's still willing to go through and at least finish up what we would need in order to do a statement of work for a, a vendor to come in and, and provide us a formal quote, um, but-
We don't need to get into it, you guys, it's your job to decide what's our business.
So, so, at, at, at this point, the folks that were having the most issue said that they can get done.
Yeah, they can get done.
My biggest concern is that we, we pretty much would have to, we would have to notify our current vendor ninety days in advance to the end of the contract, which is March of twenty-twenty, okay? Which means if we take it to a fall town meeting, uh, so long as we've done enough pre-work, um, we can still be on schedule to start the transition, we really probably would need to start the transition sometime towards the fall, um, a- and that would be the one concern, is that if we do leave it entirely to, to the fall meeting, if we're talking that we're starting in November, that is not enough time to kick off that project, quite frankly.
Well, Lynda and I did say, when we were at the advisory board, I, we did make a note that we were going to look into all the options, one of them was, uh, consulting with your, with the person that you know, too, because, um, again, in preparation for the changeover, because we know it needs to be changed.
Yeah, yeah, we know it has to be done.
That, that changeover is gonna take three months, and I'm gonna tell you right now, you don't want to start your changeover at the same time that you notify your service provider-
Yeah.
-that you're gonna be doing it, because, and last time, it took us nine months to implement the new email system. So we're not ready to start soon, we're gonna potentially have some, some risk there.
Okay.
We just wanted to get through the town meeting.
Yeah, let's get through.
No, I, I get it, but-
Believe me, no one needs it more than I do, and I want it, but I'm going to muddle along so that it can be done right.
And Cindy too, and she agreed, cause she was here last Thursday also when we saw them.
Yeah.
Peter?
And, uh, kind of your open space article, you're not in here in this pile, that's a fall, we expect to come in in the fall. The, the public campground, uh, hold it under open space?
Yeah, we know, it's not, nothing, or, actually, just to update everybody on that topic, Kathy is, believes she's found some additional money to tear down the remaining three buildings, so if Kathy's gonna find money, we're gonna use it, so right now, that's hold.
I think everything else that was presented to the capital planning committee for fiscal year twenty-twenty, I think people will be coming in in the fall, um, they just assume they wouldn't be dealt with in, in-
Correct.
Mike, did you have a question?
Oh, I just wanted to say that we, we got the grant.
Oh, we did, wonderful.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, and congratulations to Kathy, she's doing good, she's doing good for us.
The grant verbiage?
The teardown.
The teardown.
For the campground.
Thirty-four South Jacob Street.
Oh, thirty-four, oh, no, there's another-
Oh, I'm sorry.
This is campground.
Oh, that's the campground.
She's out after similar money for campground.
Oh, but, oh, but we did get it, but we did get it, but we got money though, you said, for thirty-four?
Yes, we did, yes.
Just for that one?
Uh, yeah, that was one that we, we put out.
Yeah.
And, um, we've already got nine thousand dollars, and this will give us, uh, at least thirty-five hundred, four thousand dollars more. We've already got nine thousand dollars, and this will give us, uh, at least thirty-five hundred, four thousand dollars more.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
That's good.
All good.
All good, all good things.
I have a very good question.
Yes.
The number one, you said it was a non-money article, if I, if I understood it properly. The town, again, the town administrator, did you have that in, in the top of the list here?
Oh, that's, that's just a vote to see if we want, that's by petition. We have to put that on, and it's just-
Is that money gonna be in money?
No, it won't be in money, and it has to be voted on to see whether or not the people want it or not.
Okay.
That's what that is.
Okay. So, there's no money in that?
No, there's no money involved with that. Okay, any more questions before we move on? Dawn, did you have anything? No? Okay. Anybody else? All right.
John?
Okay, we'll move on. We have a municipal, uh, transfer from the, uh, police department, from Chief Blanchard, in the amount of two-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty-nine dollars and twenty-two cents, uh, to go into the police expense account. This was an unseen expenditure, and he had to have, um, some work done. On the cruiser here, and the bill is here, if you wanna see it.
Motion to pay the bill.
Motion to pay it? I mean, a motion will send it on to the advisory-
Where is transferring it from? Is it from the reserve account?
Oh, probably from, yeah, she didn't, it's probably, it's municipal relief, so that comes from the reserve. Because it's on, that the advisory board have to sign it.
Okay.
All right. Are they meeting again this week?
Um, I believe they are.
So, we'll have to get that, yeah, we'll have to get that to them. The heat?
It's the heat.
Oh, my God, it's loud.
Have you, have you highly, uh, town highly watched yet?
Not yet.
Not yet. Okay. Our next one is resignations. Okay. We, this comes from our town treasurer. She had gone, she was out on a ninety-day leave of absence, and she has decided that she's not coming back to Brookfield. And, you know, we take this with the, don't like to take it, 'cause she was doing a good job for us and, uh-
She's got family stuff.
And she's got some family problems and things, and so, she's decided not to come back to work for us. And so, we take this with regret.
Yep.
Yeah. And we'll have Karen send a letter out to Monica on this. Okay. And then, we have another one here from the town accountant. She was out on, um, also a medical leave, and she's choosing also, she's gonna resign from her position also. And this is taken with regret also, and so, it's in her route. And then, we have another one here, um, from Reserve Officer Richard Cavallari. Uh, he's, he's resigning due to changes in his personal life that leave him with less time to devote to his job. And he said he would like to thank him for his time with the Brookfield Police Department and wish him well in the future endeavors. That's from Chief Blanchard. And we wish him well also. And send him a letter, too. Okay. Now, we'll-
Will those be announced, just, those resignations be announced so that all the town employees-
Do we have any department?
They know. Oh, yes, we've already, um, we've sent around, um, we haven't-
No, we have not.
Oh, we didn't, oh, with Carrie's, we haven't, and with Monica, too, yeah, we haven't.
Well, because you just, you have an excuse, you just accept it, so then-
We have told, told them, though, that, I mean, we've had interim people in place. Yeah. Yeah, we will, we'll-
Our capital planning committee never knew that anybody was on leave, and we still don't know the people who are advising, you know, we, so, it would be just real helpful if-
You sent out and said that we had her, the one that's helping out to, in the accountant's office to just do warrants for us, her name is Marilyn Matthews. And she's only gonna put in about ten to twelve hours a week. She's just gonna do that. And then, we have, um, Lonnie Cristasia. Lonnie is doing our, we appointed her quite a while back. She's gonna, she's the interim treasurer, and we did that until after town meeting, and then, we're gonna put the ad out for that.
Just, just as a procedure, it would be real helpful.
I did, well, I sent it out to, to the department.
Yeah, Karen had already done, did that.
I did send it out to the members of the CIPC, but I'll add you to my list, okay?
And she will, tomorrow, tomorrow she'll drop a note to all, everybody and let them know that we had the two registry, uh, I mean, resignations tonight. Okay.
And you're, you're looking for additional. Speaking of that project that you do all the time as financial support-
Yeah, financial support. I'm looking in, yeah.
So, you're out after additional resources?
Yes, I'm out for additional resources. I've been talking with the, um, who was it? I've been talking to the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission Regional Accounting Program. And they have contracted, um, it's a professional firm that will come out and take over and help out with all of our books and get everything all in order. So, I have a meeting with them next week. They're coming down next week, so, that's going on. So, I, I have, 'cause like I'm the, I help out with the financial team, so I've been on top of this all along. And the reason, the one, the lady that we have that's helping us now in the accounting over there with the warrants, um, she's a retired accountant from Bellingham, and she was the financial director, but she lives in the town of Webster. And I got, we, I got her name from, um, the Accounting Association. So, I've been in touch with them, too, to find people for us. Because, you know, for these positions, it's, they're far and few in between to find people to do these jobs anymore.
Well, and the example of the Pioneer Valley is that they've actually got five towns that are actually working together to do similar kinds of things, just 'cause they can't find the resources.
Yeah. And, um, what they're gonna, I know what they're doing is they're planning on having like these professional firms come in and stay as their accountants. And that's something that we, we're gonna discuss also.
Have to.
Have, we have to, 'cause you can't-
You can't find the people.
Yeah, but you can't find the people. I was trying, I've been trying, I've been in touch with the Department of Revenue and everybody. So, that's the solution. We're gonna see if we can go with them and see what happens. And we'll just keep everybody informed on, you know, how the finances are here in the town.
Did you uncancel the meeting, the, um, did you uncancel the other half of the annual town meeting?
Oh, yeah.
Six-twenty-one?
Yeah, six-twenty-one, which you probably, oh, we'll get through all of it.
Yeah, we don't have to do anything, it's just posted.
Yeah, let's, let's wait for now. But let's, let's get our hands wrapped around, let's see how long the, even the non-money articles are, some of them are long enough that we don't know how long that would run.
Okay. All right. Well, now, we have, um, here, correspondence. That's all my stuff there, I was keeping for a while. All right. We don't have, uh, nothing under, uh, do you have anything under other?
No, I, I spoke earlier, well, we, I, as you're looking to your next one, we did have a great session on, under municipal vulnerabilities. I thought Dawn can shake his head in the right direction, 'cause he participated. But, uh, drains, drainage, water are issues. And the more we can focus on it and, and get our arms around it, the better. And I just thought it was a good program and a good, a good six or eight hours of effort.
Mike?
Just one question. Clarence, did we ever make some progress on Rice Corner, uh, property drainage issues with, uh?
So, the way, hopefully, we can have a new highway superintendent so we understand our priorities. And one of the things that come out of the vulnerability studies are drainage. We had a project identified for Rice Corner Gay Road, which is very close to that particular issue up at, at one-eighteen Rice Corner or one-nineteen Rice Corner. So, I would think that if we complete the vulnerability stuff, there will be grant monies available where we might be able to, to, uh, take care of the Rice Corner Gay Road issue. And we add in that to solve it. But no decisions have been made. Get a, let's get a highway superintendent here so that we can talk priorities and make sure that we wanna continue with that particular project.
Okay, just one last question is, will, will you all be on board with, with asking our new highway superintendent to help with the demolition of the, uh-
Oh, of course, we will be, yes. We're all on board, yeah.
Worked in the past.